Thank you everybody, I'd like to call this February 15th meeting of the Board of Trustees to order, could we have a roll call please?
Thank you, trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Goldberg.
Here.
Trustee Gould.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Yeah.
And President Torpe.
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Safety Act.
Oh wait, Robin. Stay on the wave.
In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall, on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may be taken at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Before we get started, if I could ask everybody to stand, take a moment of silence and lift the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, in due republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple announcements, before we get started, Village Hall and Village facilities will be closed this coming Monday, February 20th, in observance of President's Day. And also, the next budget workshop for the Board of Trustees will be Wednesday, February 29th, at 8:00 here in Village Hall. I know the reason why some of us are here tonight is to swear in a couple probationary firefighters, so Chief, get started with that and do that right away.
It's always a pleasure to swear in two new firefighters into the South Orange Fire Department. I've had that pleasure a few times, and I wish both of these members who did absolutely excellent during their training, the best time for them in the rest of their career. There's nothing more rewarding than serving the public as a firefighter in my world, and I see that in them, and I envy them, standing here with gray hair and being the age I am. I just envy them for what they're looking forward to, and I wish them the very best of luck. So at this time, I'd like to bring up probationary firefighter Kugel and Antonio Popola.
Do you want to have a family member hold it? Yeah, you want to have someone hold that for you?
Yes.
Have your, anybody you want to come up and hold it. Place the hand on the Bible. Aye, state your name.
Aye, David Kugel.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of this people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties as a firefighter in the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
All the duties as a firefighter in the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
For the township of South Orange Village.
For the township of South Orange Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like firefighter Popola to come to the dais. It's a point of interest, both of these individuals are lifelong residents of South Orange, and an affirmed believer in hiring local residents. I think they're of very high value to the community.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, I'm telling you, both.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties as a firefighter in the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
All the duties. All the duties as a firefighter in the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
For the township of South Orange Village.
For the township of South Orange Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can just give it to him. Right there, right in front of him. But thank you Chief for allowing us to swear in these two new members tonight, I think we're all excited to welcome them aboard, especially considering the lifelong residency for both of them. And as much as we know, people would like to stay for the whole meeting, who came here for the swearing in, we'll give you a couple minutes if you'd like to leave, and if not, obviously you're welcome to stay. And that's usually when. We'll start doing the swearings at the end of the meeting.
Good. I finished the whole series now. Tutors. Very good.
So before we move on to the rest of the meeting, we do have a presentation from Main Street, South Orange.
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, we can hold off on that, sure.
No?
No, no problem. So we have two ordinances tonight on our agenda for first reading. We have the first one, write by name please.
Thank you, ordinance 2012-01, this is an ordinance establishing a special improvement district within the township of South Orange Village and creating a district management corporation.
At this time, I'd like to open this up to any discussion among the board, or if someone wanted to move anything.
Where is everybody?
Deborah's going to be late, Howie won't be here.
Freeholders' meeting? Freeholders' meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't have any other discussion, we've talked about this quite extensively. Obviously, I welcome any other discussion, if anyone else has anything else to say.
I'm in favor of it. Are we going to take a vote?
So I move this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you, so it did pass.
Thank you.
We have a second ordinance on tonight's agenda, this is ordinance 2012-02, an ordinance to amend the central business district redevelopment plan to provide for certain additional conditional uses and limitations thereon.
But this time I'd- I'd like to say something before we, you know, in the past, we had conference agenda where certain items would get discussed, and we went to this new format of the interim administrators suggesting, and certain topics, including this ordinance, had not come up for discussion in public yet. And there's actually some resolutions too that have not come up, and this new system, I find, does not work. It actually takes away some of the transparency, and some of the public comment, and some of the board discussion that we've had in the past, and I'd like to recommend we either go back to the former system where we had a conference agenda, committees made their reports, and this kind of item would come up for discussion, and then we could also have time to tweak an ordinance. So I'd like to have a discussion about it, I'd also like to table this ordinance, so we can have that discussion.
Yeah, I agree with you on most of those points, Mark, and the corollary to that is we also have not been receiving the minutes from the committee meetings, which was supposed to also help facilitate this process, and I'm not, I don't blame you, Robin, I'm not pointing, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus here, but because we don't have those minutes, you're right, these committees are happening in isolation, and we're not having that discussion and those updates, so I'm in complete agreement with you.
So, two things I'd like to suggest, you know, I don't know what order we're supposed to do it in, but I would like to move to table this ordinance for now, and I'd like to have a public discussion on this, either later tonight, or whenever you feel appropriate, George President.
Yeah, we can certainly, when we get to new business later, we can add that, and in the meantime, if someone wants to make a motion to table this.
I made the motion to table, questions if anyone wants to-
Second.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of tabling this? Do we need a roll call?
No, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Okay.
You oppose?
Yes.
So we'll schedule this, depending on the outcome of that next conversation, we'll accordingly schedule this, so if we need to, if we are going to switch, then we'll schedule it accordingly to that, and if not, we can make sure to have this after the next discussion. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to chime in, even though I'm in favor of tabling this ordinance, because I think it's premature, I know I corresponded with council and made a suggestion to it, because I don't think the terms in it are defined or well-defined, it struck me a little, although an entirely different topic, it struck me like the boarding house ordinance where, you know, came before us, and it could have a lot of implications, and yet it was almost, you know, matter of fact. I like the new format, and I think that we need to improve it to address the observations that you made, rather than go back to the old one, because I think the old one was incredibly long and inefficient, and by virtue of that, I feel like that's a less transparent process. You never really know, because things get discussed so long and so many times, what room you're supposed to be in if you want to really affect something. So in addition to the correction of the minutes, I have just one or two more things, and I think we should just try harder to have a more efficient process. For one thing, I think, no, and I've recommended this before, the committee system has to work, and that means not only obviously getting minutes, we all go to the meetings, I mean, they're regularly held, it's not like the committees aren't meeting and aren't seriously considering these things, so the minutes obviously is a problem, but I don't want to see ordinances, I mean, you know, unless there's some emergency or something like that, which I really can't imagine, because you have to have first, second reading and public hearing anyway, so what's the emergency? But I don't want to see ordinances come to us that have not been through committee, and I've even suggested to committees, that's very commonplace, either goes to legal or goes to finance, because obviously it's going to impact one of those two things, out of a substantive committee like planning and zoning, public safety, or public works. And I think if we followed that, everyone would be in the loop, and everyone would also understand, sort of axiomatically, whether this has legs or not, and it gets amended, sort of in the committee process, by virtue of not only public input, but all of our input, so that by the time it gets here, it shouldn't be, you know, a mess, and-
I think these are all, I think these are all good points, but if we could make sure to note them and continue that conversation, we get to that discussion later on in the agenda, and just continue to go through it as it stands.
That's fine, I just didn't want the silence in response to Mark's comments and Michael's agreement with them, to stand for the board, because I do not agree with them. I like the new process, we just need to fix it.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that we can discuss this at one of two points this evening.
Thank you.
And in the entrance of transparency, because I'm sure people that are watching are going, what in the world just happened? Steve, can you explain what this ordinance is or was?
Oh, sure.
I mean, I know what it is, but for the public's benefit.
Sure, well, it's part of, it's part of a larger discussion that's been ongoing between the property owner on Vos Avenue, Sterling and the avenue, with regard to a number of issues that will be coming before the board.
I think, I think that, you know, if you really want to be fair about it, we discussed making other changes, going back predating this, we wanted the, we wanted the land use ordinances for the towns, for the different stores, sort of an upgrading of the-
Sure.
Of the terms in the stores, and the use permits that are available, and that was one of the things that was discussed, and when we came to this, we said we wanted to include this in an overall plan of looking at everything, and not do it piecemeal, to me, this is doing it piecemeal, we're taking one piece to speed it up, and I wasn't really comfortable with that, the rest of the report was supposed to have been done by the end of last summer, for whatever reason, the planner and the planning board have not been able to complete it on a timely manner, and we're waiting for that, and it should be done shortly still, and I think we should tie it all together, and have one sensible ordinance that encompasses all of it. And I understand Sterling's, you know, their rush, but that shouldn't be our rush, we should do this all together in one piece, and I'm okay with the ordinance by itself, but I think it makes more sense to do it together.
And I can't comment on that, I mean, that obviously makes some, makes some sense, although this was a part of the larger discussion to settle a larger dispute, so I just had to make that point, and I also want to apologize to trustee Bauer, because indeed, she had, she had emailed me one, one matter which I inadvertently forgot to include in that, in that redrafting that I did of that ordinance, and I do apologize for not including that one item. But obviously, the ordinance can use some discussion, and, you know, I will provide the input necessary when we get to that point later in the agenda.
Alright, thank you.
Shall I move the ordinance that we, okay. I move the ordinance 2012-01, be set down for second reading and final passage at the March 12th meeting of the Board of Trustees, and that a public hearing be held at that time, and that the village clerk be authorized to take the necessary action regarding public notice of such public hearing.
And I should point out that 10 days prior to that hearing, the ordinance, as it's been adopted on first reading, has to be mailed to all property owners within that district and all abutting property owners, so any lot that abuts this area must receive that, along with a notice of the time, date, and place of the hearing, so that has to-
Who's going to take responsibility for that postcard being sent out?
That's got to be mailed, well, the assessor has the obligation to produce, and I would suggest we get a set of labels from the assessor for all of the properties within that designated area, and all the properties that immediately abut it.
Okay, I second Janine's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Thank you. Okay, Carol, you're right, okay. We can have our presentation from Main Street at this point.
It takes a few seconds for-
You got to hold the power down?
I heard it, I think it's pretty loud.
I heard the noise, I don't know if that was on or off. It's coming on.
Good evening, Carol Anzalone Newman for Main Street, South Orange, and I have with me Kathryn Crenshaw, who's the co-chair of the design committee, and Mark Rosenberg, who is an active member of the design committee, and we're really happy tonight to present a Design Excellence Award to Stuart Wainberg and Jared Hutter of Wainco, for all of the work that they have done on 75 South Orange Ave., which is the building on the corner of South Orange Avenue and Scotland Road, and it stretches down all the way to the alleyway by Robin Ross's building. Stuart took on a massive undertaking with this project, and he really has done a beautiful job renovating, you can see from just the things we listed, there may be other things that he took on with this, but he did really try to honor the historic element of the building, certainly the building on the corner here, which is the older building of the two, and paid great attention to detail. So this is something that we wanted to start up again, we had given Design Excellence Awards, but we think it's also, it's really important to recognize people that do this kind of work in the downtown, for a lot of reasons, and also, it's, I think, a great inspiration for other landowners, because we're hoping that in this, with this renovation and rehab that he's done, and we've already heard evidence of it, other property owners will say, oh, wow, somebody invested a lot of time and a lot of money and a lot of effort into this, and my adjacent property could use some updating, so that's already happening.
The next pictures will show you the before and the afters, just we wanted to highlight that, of where he started, and everything that was put into the building to enhance the look. We particularly would love to highlight the large sign on the side that has reference to historically what was originally there. Stuart said to us that he loved the way old historical pictures that he had seen of the building, and he wanted to try and bring some of that back, and we were really charmed by the effort to identify that very iconic sign that had been on the building long ago, that some people may remember, but a lot of people new to the community would have no idea, and we wanted to show that picture, to show you the connection, and that attention to detail, that was really exciting, and is particularly, I think, beautiful at night.
Stuart.
Thank you very much, I didn't, I don't have any prepared remarks, I'm a little under the weather, but, you know, a lot, a lot went into this, and I guess I should begin by thanking the town for being extremely supportive. The sign plan that we have is very extensive, and the town embraced the idea that signs can be more than just communicating directions or names, they can be a significant architectural feature. The town deserves a lot of credit, there's not a town in this, in this region, I think, that has these types of signs, and for that, I thank them. Main Street embraced the idea of design for excellence from the minute we met them, and Kathryn and Carol, you know, had probably at least 10 meetings with me, and they were extremely determined to make it absolutely right, and I really appreciated all the effort, extraordinary effort, particularly Kathryn, the volunteer, I mean, her commitment was extraordinary, and the town should be very proud of the effort that she made, and she should be very proud after the fact that her handprints are all over our building in so many, in so many ways. The big comment I would make is that I still believe the glass is half-full in South Orange, and I hope that some of the things I'm seeing that were inspiring other people to believe the same way will continue. There are, you know, from a retail point of view, people are still leaving South Orange and shopping elsewhere. The more we can upgrade the facilities and improve the tenants, the future will be bright, and I think it's, I think it's very clear to people today that the future is bright. I also want to thank Jared Hutter, who was my associate, who worked extremely hard, this was a process, people don't realize, this was probably a four-year process, takes a lot of time, a lot of detail, it's easy to do a so-so job, it's much, much, much more difficult to do an excellent job, and to worry about all the details, and to try to get it right, and this really was, it was that kind of effort, trying to know exactly what to restore and what to alter, but thank you very much, and we look forward to a bright future here in the township.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did I say something about that? Yes, we also just want to make one last comment, the other thing that we introduced to Stuart was the county SERP grants, which he was able to take advantage of, which is another opportunity for other property owners to take advantage of in the downtown, which we've tried to make available, and the tenants also took advantage of the Friends Program matching grants that the village gives out, that Main Street administers, so pretty much every one of the tenants took advantage of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Main Street, and also thank Stuart and Jared for their hard work on this, I was sitting on the planning board when you first came in, and I was really excited by your project, and it's everything I could imagine, it's a wonderful, wonderful addition to the town, and I appreciate all of the time and investment you put into it, it's a wonderful project, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Main Street, for doing that, and also, thank you to Stuart, I think, everything's great about the project, except one thing, makes Village Hall look worse. So now, we really have to renovate this building, you're holding us to a high standard on this block, but we definitely do appreciate it. We can, I'd be happy to open up our meeting tonight for public comments. Do we have the sign-in sheet? If you could just come up and state your name and your address at the podium, please, and if I can ask everyone to try and keep their comments to just a couple minutes, so we can get to everybody tonight.
You told me I could have a half hour.
You get that Maplewood.
Good evening, my name's Jerry Ryan, I am Maplewood resident, a member of the Maplewood Township Committee, just want to tell you that I'm not here speaking in an official capacity, representing the township committee, I'm just here as an interested citizen, and I thank you for making the opportunity for me to speak. I know that you have a, I'm on your agenda this evening about moving the school board election to the November general election, you know that Maplewood's had that discussion, you know how we feel about it, and I don't feel I need to speak to you about that this evening. When we discussed that at our last meeting, we also discussed another related topic that we didn't reach a conclusion on, but I think it's an important topic for you as well, I hope that at some point you'll consider it as well. The legislation that is making its way through Trenton and is probably going to be signed that allows both governing bodies to pass a resolution to ask to move the elections, also leaves the Board of School estimate in place- also leaves the Board of School estimate in place, makes some minor changes to the way the Board of School estimate works, such that if we all decide to move the election, the Board of School estimate would only be involved in considering questions for the school budget that are above the cap. Now, I feel very strongly that we should, as, as both governing bodies involved in the towns in this joint school district, should take some action to make known to our legislators our feeling that the Board of School estimate is, it's archaic, it's unfair, it's unclear, and it's undemocratic. I personally, speaking just for myself, I would like very much to see us figure out a way to take action to make the Board of School estimate go away. I'd like very much for, if we do decide together or decide with the help of the school board to move the elections to November, an additional change that I'd like to see would be the elimination of the Board of School estimate and a replacement with an operation the way that all the other type-two districts who move their elections operate. Budgets that are within cap don't need any further consultation. Any questions for actions over cap require a budget referendum for the citizens to vote. I think that this is a goal to strive for. I think we should consider asking our legislators to put in special legislation to change the district, to get rid of the Board of School estimate, and to operate the way all the other type-two districts with elected school boards operate. Thank you, good luck in your conversation this evening. I'm looking forward to seeing the results, and thanks very much for making the time and letting me speak to you.
Hey Jerry, I have one quick question on it. Do you know, for other towns that don't have a Board of School estimate, if there's a referendum, and clearly we have two towns, would it have to, would the referendum have to pass in both towns?
As far as I understand, the way joint school districts work, referenda have to pass in every community. So, Maplewood would have to pass a question, and South Orange would have to pass a question in order for it to be successful.
And so, if it failed in one, it would, it would fail?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding, not a lawyer, but that's my understanding of the law. Mr. Rothert could probably give us a better, a better sense of it. Maplewood did ask its attorney to do some research into this, and, you know, I'll certainly make the results of any of that available to you all.
We're looking into it right now. We've already started that investigation several days ago. Trustee Gould has been asking some questions about the relationship for a while, and it's taken some time for us to get the organic documents, because it's interesting. Our situation is unique in the entire state of New Jersey, the way we're, we're formed and operate. That spawned the reason for this special legislation that's making its way through the legislature right now. But some of the issues that have been raised here just now, we're looking at, and we're going to be getting a memo out to the board shortly on.
If, Mr. President, if you'd just indulge me for one more moment. In addition to a discussion about moving the elections and a discussion about the Board of School estimate, we had a little bit of discussion about the notion of actually completely changing the governance of the school district to be a standard plain vanilla regional school district. And that doesn't seem like there's anybody around that thinks that's a good idea, so that, that idea sort of died on the vine. So, I think if, just speaking for myself again, what I'd be advocating for is leaving the district alone, leaving it as a nine-member board elected at large across the two communities. Personally, I think the election should be in November, and I think we should get rid of the Board of School estimate and have these special questions for matters above the cap as, as a referendum in both towns. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
This doesn't mean then we have to come to a Maplewood meeting, does it?
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you. Leslie?
Bill?
Bill Calabrese again, 13 Scotland Road, former village president, pharmacist, owner of prescription counter, 37 years. Okay. As I sat here, I could go through a million scenarios of what I would like to talk to you about, but it gets hard because I know, you know, time is limited. But I wish Howie was here, because the other day I was in the parking lot, and I was talking to Howie about the Special Improvement District. And I said, "Howie, are you really convinced it's the best thing for you? And do you have an open mind and listen to these arguments really against it?" And he said to me, "No, it's good for the town, and it's very inexpensive, and people don't realize there's not much money really we're talking about." And that really bothered me. You know why? How many people are in the Special Improvement District? How many town, how many buildings are going to be assessed? 100, roughly? I'm guessing. Like, you probably know, right? About 100?
I don't remember these.
All right. And how many property, how many taxpayers or property owners are there in South Orange? 5,000? Okay. So, you got 100 on one side, 5,000 on the other side. I mentioned the first time I spoke up here, the two most important aspects of any community, or I should say, the three important aspects, but the two most important are the school systems and the commercial business district, right? And it's the, it's the job of the Board of Trustees to make sure that both of these really excel, because that's what attracts people to your community. There's a lot of beautiful towns all over New Jersey, nice tree-lined streets, et cetera, nice views, but what they buy a house for and what they move into community for is the schools and their, and their downtown community. And, and the reason why I say that is because we all have a stake. My house on Husky Road has a stake in the downtown. Somebody's house on Ralston has a stake in the downtown. My business on Scotland Road, or my building on Scotland Road, has a stake in the downtown. We all have a stake in the downtown. So, it's really not fair to designate or segregate people and ask them to pay more money when we all have the same benefits coming out of the same area. So, you can't say, "Well, the commercial business owners are going to benefit more." They don't. The property owners are going to benefit just as much, if not more, from whatever happens in the downtown. So, if there is going to be a Special Improvement District, or whatever you want to call it, or however you designate it, it should not be just funded or paid for by the people in that particular area, it should be paid for by the community at large because we all benefit. And the reason why I say this is, wants to prevent a Board of Trustees or any, any council or any community constantly saying, "Well, the road on Glenview, that needs repaving. We're going to have a special assessment on Glenview because we cannot afford to pay for Glenview's road, so we're going to just assess the people on Glenview." Now, we go over to Ralston. Well, Ralston's in bad shape. The curb's all broken, the sidewalks are bad. We're going to assess everybody on Ralston. So, what happens is you open up the door that leads other governing bodies, not necessarily this one, but opens the door and says, "Why don't we have special assessments for certain areas of town? Because we really don't have the money to do it, and if we improved, if we force them to fix it, do the street look better, and they'll, and they'll improve." Well, that's not the case. The case is the whole town benefits if every street is looked, is improved and looks better, if the downtown looks better, and if the school system looks better. So, all I'm trying to give you is, is an idea that if you're going to do something like this, and you're going to be aggressive again, to improve the downtown, make it a town-wide effort. Don't just say that the commercial property owners have to put the money in, because it's not fair to them. Because in the long run, like I said, it's, it's faulted. It just, it won't make it. What you're going to do is you're going to riot, raise rents, it's going to be harder to get good quality tenants to come in. It's going to be a very difficult situation. That's all I want to say on that subject. And one last thing, I want to thank the village president for showing up the other day at Seton Hall. It was a wonderful event, and they showed the film of the fire at Seton Hall that took place about 12 years ago. And it was very heartwarming, and I was sitting with the two, the young boys, at the time 18, 19-years-old, that spent about three months in the hospital just trying to get, you know, back to something that would be considered normal. And I was so proud just to be sitting with those three boys. So, there's a lot more things in this life that are tougher to accomplish than improving the downtown. But let's, if we're going to do it, let's do it the right way and make everybody a partner in the downtown, not just the commercial property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick clarification is that the village is, is funding the Special Improvement District as well, which does come from, I don't want to get into a back-and-forth, but I do just want to make sure to clarify that taxpayers will be paying for the Special Improvement District.
Yeah, but, but what you're saying-
Again, I, I really don't want to get-
I don't want, I don't want to get the argument, but, but you got to clarify that. Is that just the services they already receive, and you're considering that as a monetary, you know, offshoot? Or is it more money coming in? Like, is there a pool of money coming into the-
It's more.
Into the downtown? Or is it just services in lieu of-
It's both. Leslie?
And I, I again want to bring up the point of the Special Improvement District and remind you that the business district did not want it. They were polled, they were asked, and they said they did not want it. A lot of you ran for office, and you told me to my face, if the business district didn't want it, that you would listen. I don't see that now. The other thing is, we pay a huge amount of money in property taxes. And it just so happens, a lot of these business owners happen to be people who live in the town. We're not phantom landlords. We live here. We care about this community. And we pay an enormous amount of money in taxes. The fact is that you've got to get your spending under control. That's what needs to be done. We're not, we more than pay our fair share. Again, I urge you not to vote on this, please. We've offered our help, we've offered checks without having to be forced. And that's all I can keep on saying. After you, you put something like this in effect, a lot of people are going to write a check, and you won't see them. There won't be a contribution.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Good evening. My name's Alyssa Anderson, I'm a longtime resident of South Orange. Having attended the last Finanz meeting, I was horrified to hear increases in the property tax. Well, let's look at the facts in South Orange. Since 2008, the property tax has risen, has risen $200. Well, last year it was 260. Next year, it's going to be 270. What is wrong, what is wrong with this? Well, I'll tell you what's wrong. People of this town, South Orange, cannot bear it no longer. It's time you stop squeezing it out of the beds into this town.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Just please come up to the podium and state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Stoney Johnson. I own Stoney's Restaurant. And I just wanted to go on public record that I am in fact against this id. And I just had one quick question that I haven't had clarified. If the business owners, and I, from what I understand, the majority of them are against this id, does that have any bearing on how this thing is voted upon? I'll just leave that to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
No.
Okay. If not, I'd like to close public comments.
Can I get an answer on that? Does it make any difference if the business owners-
I, I think as part of the discussion that we will have when we consider this for a second reading, we should be able to answer that question. Before we get to discussions, actually, there is one resolution in particular that I would like to move forward to the beginning of the agenda, as I know there are a few members of the audience who are here for this tonight. As much as I know our discussion is quite exciting here, want to give them the option of, of saying they're leaving. And that is, is a resolution supporting marriage equality in New Jersey. This is an issue that the Board of Trustees has, for many, many years, as long as this has been an, an issue in South Orange, has been a supporter of. And if, if the board will allow me, I'd love to read this resolution quickly again tonight. The Senate voted on this earlier this weekend, the Assembly will vote on this tomorrow. So, I think it's important for South Orange to make sure, to make its stand and opinion on this known. So, whereas the Township of South Orange Village supports equal rights for same-sex couples by advocating domestic partnerships and civil union legislation, whereas in 2004, New Jersey became the fifth state in the nation to recognize domestic partnerships, and whereas at 12:01 a.m. on July 10, 2004, South Orange held a domestic partnership celebration at which 38 couples registered their partnerships. And whereas in December 2006, the New Jersey Legislature approved civil unions for same-sex couples, and in February 2007, under the Civil Union Act, South Orange was among one of the first New Jersey municipalities to issue civil union licenses. And whereas since the adoption of New Jersey Civil Union Act, many more states have since followed suit. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Township of South Orange Village believe that to meet the requirements set forth by the New Jersey State Supreme Court opinion in Lewis v. Harris, full marriage equality must be enacted in New Jersey. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Township of South Orange Village believes that in addition to the broad popular support for and the economic benefits of marriage for the state of New Jersey, that equal protection under the U.S. Constitution is not met until all couples are treated equally under the eyes of the law. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Township of South Orange Village does not believe that civil rights issues should be put on a public referendum, but rather enacted by the courage of our elected representatives. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Township of South Orange Village that it does hereby publicly state its support for the New Jersey Senate's most recent affirmative vote on marriage equality, and calls upon the New Jersey Assembly to do the same, making same-sex couples legal in the state of New Jersey upon Governor Chris Christie to sign such legislation. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to South Orange's representatives in the New Jersey Assembly and Senate, Governor Christie, the New Jersey League of Municipalities, and the New Jersey Conference of Mayors. Do we have a motion? A second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yeah, I absolutely support this. I would just say a procedural comment, I just wish we would have seen this in advance in the meeting, right? This is the first we're seeing it or hearing of it. So, in the future, if we could just see, see material that we're going to vote on before the meeting, but I absolutely support it.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes, I'll just say that Marty and Mike, I think, were the first ones here at midnight eight years ago? Seven and a half years ago?
2004.
2004. They were the first here, we're still first in the whole state, we knew it here at midnight.
Thank you. So, Resolution 2012-047 did pass. We'll send it forward.
But hopefully, this will be our contribution as a governing body to try and encourage our legislature to pass this, and hopefully the governor to sign this, and we can move forward advancing civil rights in New Jersey. So, we do have another resolution for separate action, which I think we can get to after our discussion this evening. We do have a number of discussion items. This is a section of the agenda that used to be on conference agenda that we're now doing as discussion items in these meetings. Trustee Rosner, I would ask, we have our first discussion item about committee minutes and staff assignments to boards. Is this, is that fair enough to put this conversation under? We can have it now?
It's fair enough, you know, and to, to, to the comments, you know, that Janine brought up before about how this system just needs to be tweaked. The problem that I find missing is the committee reports. And, and that there's been no committee reports whatsoever, and we don't get to that. So, if we add committee reports to this kind of agenda, we're actually just going back to a conference agenda, we're also not getting any reports from resident committees. And what, and not that every resident committee would come every month, but there's no set format for it. There used to be a set format for it, where a resident committee would know when to come or how to come. And I, I don't disagree that these things can't be tweaked, and maybe Barry has history from the two towns that he was in prior to this, of improving these agendas, but there's something, there's something wrong, and it needs to be fixed. And maybe it's the old method's not perfect, and maybe this method's not perfect, maybe a combination of the two, but we, my opinion is we have to change it, because we're missing a lot of public discussion, and we're missing, just as importantly, we're missing board discussion as a whole. And it's fine for, you know, legal committee and planning and zoning to discuss it, but it's not the same thing as having seven members of the board discuss it in front of the public. And that's, and that's what I think we have to get back to.
Well, that happens at first reading, though.
Excuse me?
That happens at first reading.
But that's, the first reading comes up here, and we haven't discussed it in advance, and then we might have to redo it. So, we may say, at first reading of an ordinance, we're going to come here the first time we had that discussion, and we decide, oh, the ordinance has to be changed. Now, we've wasted time, and it actually takes longer to get it done, it didn't speed up the process, it slowed up the process.
And there was, for a while, there was something, there was an in-between step. Every time we had an ordinance on first reading, we actually had a draft of the ordinance on conference agenda. We wouldn't vote on it, but we would discuss it and tweak it, and then it would come at the next meeting, and we-
Exactly. And that's what we're missing.
Well, I think that's certainly a step that we, that we can recreate with this agenda format. And I would also add that there are, there are a couple things, the agenda process-
What's the difference between that and conference agenda?
Because we, because I think the idea, and I definitely agree with Trustee Bauer on this, I, I don't think, I think that was, it was a very odd format of having meetings to relegate discussion items and action items to one or another meeting. If we can incorporate it to one, which, other than this issue, which, not to dismiss it, is important, I don't feel as though there have been any other negative consequences to this. In fact, I feel like actually our meetings are starting to become a little bit more efficient. So, I would love to continue this, and if we can make some changes, like what Trustee Goldberg just suggested, where before anything is listed on first ordinance, that we can bring it as a discussion item on here. Or if something has come from committee, then it doesn't need to be a discussion item. You know, if the committee has, has vetted an idea- You know, if the committee has, has vetted an idea and the board is, is taking up an ordinance that has come from a committee, I'm not sure I see the need for us to then add one more step on top of that.
It's, but there hasn't been a public discussion. The whole point of having these things, we come there, we should have a public discussion about an ordinance, even if all seven of us are in agreement, there should be some public discussion of that ordinance.
Before something is listed.
Before we vote on it.
Or even resolutions. I mean, like, just looking at tonight's agenda, right? There's a, a resolution to award a contract for the police best practices survey. A lot of you know about this peripherally, but we've, we've never, ever discussed it publicly.
No. And I have a hundred questions about it.
And I'd be happy to talk about it here, but we have not talked about it here previously. The contract for botaglia for finance, as, and I'm sure that was talked about at the Finance Committee, but I'm not on finance, so I have a lot of questions on that one, too.
And we'll just switch it.
Well, yeah. So, I think that's, that's the point. I think there's some things that if you're not on the specific committees and we're not getting the minutes, that we're out of the loop on some of these things.
Even if we get minutes, then we should still have a discussion about it, because there are certain questions and interactions that are happening. There are still certain questions that people may have, and we, and we should, at least if we have that discussion, then the public, if they have an interest in it, will at least get to make that decision about it or hear, or hear the discussion about it, instead of coming out of the blue, which is, you know, to me, the police best practices study, even though I knew it was being considered, I didn't see any of the things, I didn't see how you came to a decision, I didn't have any questions, and, you know, and quite frankly, I think it's lacking the way it was presented the first time, but it may not be. It may just be that I'm not reading everything, which I didn't get until really chance to look at it till today.
Well, I think there's also shared responsibility on all of us, myself included, of making sure that we're getting things like this in well before our meetings, which we don't all do, which is understandable sometimes. We're all busy and we certainly have a lot that's happening at any given moment. So maybe also as part of this is making sure that we're really following our deadlines that we set, that when, when something, when there's a deadline for agenda items, that's it. And unless it's an absolute emergency, then something won't be added until the next meeting. And then that gives people that, that chance to look over it over email and then come to the meeting with comments. One of the things that I've actually discussed with our clerk, that we're going to start doing for our next meeting, as far as adding items to the agenda, is that I would like us not to do that by email anymore. And what I've created, and I've gone this over with the clerk and the administrator, is actually a form online that all of us will fill out, and that basically has checkboxes that says, has this gone to committee? Has, has there been a legal review? What committees has it gone to? What's the history? So that we can actually, when we get an agenda item, it's not just one line, and this is what the thing is, it's here's what it is, there'll be required to be a narrative of what the item is, a couple of sentences at the very least, so that when it does come to myself or to the clerk, we'd say, well, this is something that needs to be held off for the next meeting so that we can email it out and people have time to look at it. Or it needs to be on this meeting because there's a statutory deadline.
As well as, we need to sign off on whether if there's funding for a resolution, if there's, if it's a budget item.
Right. Right, and that, and that's, that's part of it, too.
We can keep tweaking it, and I'll leave it up to, to the administrator to make sure that these things get added, and the village president, but I, but I, I just, I, you know, obviously, I think we're all in agreement that something needs to be fixed and improved.
Those are definitely valid concerns, and what, what we can make sure to do, you know, every couple of months, because we are trying something new, is just to make sure to come back and look at it, and if it's working, keep doing it, and if it's not working, change it again. And if at some point we do have to go back to one way, then we do, but I think we've got a couple of options left to try.
And, and the rest of this, I think, has to do with the, the staff assignments of the board, the trustees, standing committees, and getting the committee minutes. And we made a couple of changes, but a couple of the committees have fell short on having somebody who, who knows what the role is at the meetings. I sent, I sent the administrator an email this morning specifically about the planning and zoning committee, but we need to straighten out that the, who's going to which committees and who's responsible for making sure that, that notes or minutes are taken and passed on to the rest of the board and to the village.
Do we have a description? I don't, I don't want to say a job description, but a, a task description so that, so that someone who's, who's...
Yes. We do have one, I don't have it here, but we do.
That, that might be something worth, I, I don't think I've seen that as, you know, what, what exactly is the role of that person? And if that can be, you know, bulleted, again, that might exist somewhere, I'm not sure where.
But I, I need to know who the person is specifically for each one and make sure it's assigned again, because it's gotten lax.
And we, I think, and the other thing is, we all have different styles of doing things, like for public safety, for example, I put the agenda together, but I send it to Laura, who acts as our secretary, and if she has additional items that she's aware of, she adds to the agenda, then she distributes it. I think some of you, you know, have, you know, do it different, different ways. Either you create the agenda or staff creates the agenda. And likewise with minutes, you know, it's, every committee functions very, very differently. And sort of the corollary to this is something we had talked about several months ago, and I think has sort of fallen by the wayside, is the idea of posting agendas in advance so they're on the website, so residents, so the public knows what's going to be discussed at these committee meetings. So I, I think, you know, we had agreed that in advance, at least three days in advance, we would create our agendas for these committee meetings, send them to the clerk's office, they would post them, so people could say, oh, do I want to go to planning and zoning or not? I'm just picking on you, Mark, I'm sorry, it could be any committee. But should I go to that committee or not? And that's why they know it's on the agenda. I wasn't picking, didn't pick on you. But, so I think that's something we had agreed to, and I, I think we should try to get back to.
It ties into what I just said before. I have to know who to send it to.
Yeah, 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 sure. I'm going to agree with you.
Why don't we, how about if legal comes up with a protocol for doing that? Because, I mean, for instance, Tommy's doing the minutes of DPW now, but I, I never sent them to Robyn, I never noticed whether when he sends them out, Robyn's on them, I, I don't, I don't know whose job it is. Happy to do it now that it's my intention, but...
Yeah, but it's fine to send a protocol, but just to make sure that the administrator's included in case he doesn't go to legal committee, because, or maybe, or maybe you want to, maybe you want to send your thoughts to the legal committee.
Well, no, I, I mean, just come up with a draft that all of us will see, and, you know, then it should have attachments in it, because I know Regan proposed a very streamlined form of minutes, there's pros and cons to that and so on and so forth, but why don't we at least come up with a, a very, you know, sort of streamlined protocol? A way everybody should know what their job is.
I think that seems reasonable.
Okay.
Well, so, Deborah, chair is legal, yes. Will someone communicate that?
I'll put it on their agenda.
There you go. Thank you, Robyn.
Thanks, Robyn.
That's kind of the idea, right, is to assign it to people's committees who aren't here at the meeting?
Teach his own to show up.
So actually, ironically or not, the next agenda item is a permeable services ordinance from legal and personnel. I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the backstory of this to speak, because I don't know if another board member is, or if, or we need to wait for Trustee Davis Ford?
No, this was really my initiative, but I don't know why it's on the agenda tonight. I think it was carried from an earlier meeting, and I said that I still needed to wrap up a detail with Sal, the engineer, Renda, the engineer, and I have not done that. And I think the last legal committee was actually canceled, so I think it just got referred to legal because there was no place else for it other than the Environmental Commission, which is actually where it started. It's been hanging for a long time, it's almost ready to go. We'll just make sure we distribute it to everybody, and everyone has seen it, there's just, it was just a question of the 75% fallback rule or the specific coefficients if they were available for certain products. And I just want to make sure that we've sort of crossed our Ts on that particular point.
I'd like to see it go back to planning and zoning. To me, a permeable surface is a zoning issue, and it hasn't been reviewed by planning and zoning, I think that's where it belongs. So I'd like to see it go there before it comes back to the full board.
Okay. No problem.
Our next agenda item, which is a discussion on moving the school board election, Trustee Davis Ford, who did note earlier before the meeting that she was going to be late, asked if we could try and hold off on that until she gets here, so we can go through our other issues before we get to that one, our rest of our discussion items. And the next one is an update on East Orange Water Commission from Village Council.
Yes, we've, we've had some developments there. The, all of the parties have now executed a consent order permitting the appointment of a special master with some unique authority to resolve the issues that have risen between South Orange and the East Orange Water Commission, and as well between the city of Newark, which supplies some water to the systems in East Orange and South Orange. The, the next step in the process is that the parties have to make some suggestions for recommendations of a special master to the court. And my partner, Bob Putzel, and I, who've been handling this matter, are going to be consulting with Trustee Bauer to come up with some, some names that we can suggest for the appointment of a, a special master. The special master is going to be looking into the resolution of a, an engineered solution to the VOC problem, as well as having the powers of an arbitrator to resolve all of the contractual disputes as well. So this is a, a real positive step in the right direction, because we were traveling on a course that would have bifurcated this, some issues being resolved in court and others under an arbitration clause in our, in our contract by another party. So we're now in, 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 before one, one party. Another positive thing is, at least in the first instance, all the costs associated with resolving the water quality issues are going to be borne by East Orange Water Commission, not by South Orange. So we're hopeful that in the course of the next 10 days, we'll have the appointment of a special master, and then we'll have, you know, more full attention of that party rather than the court, so that we can begin to move solutions to some of these issues. In addition, a meeting was held, which was attended by President Dorpe, Trustee Bauer, and I believe Trustee Levinson as well, to explore alternate sources of, of water. And my firm has written an extensive report to the trustees on, on the results of that effort.
Thank you, Steve. Current water quality reports that we've been, you know, from testing, and I don't know what the results have been, but are those, can we make those public or, or not?
I think, I think we're doing that.
Oh, we are? Okay.
I think we're doing it, if we're not, we will. The, the question came up, we, we do one other test in addition to the test that's done and published by East Orange Water Monthly. And I think we asked the question earlier this month whether the township, the village wanted to go forward with some additional testing, whether you wanted to do it more frequently. We have found that the, the results, our results and East Orange Water Commission's test results border just below that one part. And since we're concerned about manipulation of pumping in the well field, it could be that if we tested more frequently, we might find a different result. But we're only testing it once a month. Coincidentally, I think, last month, just, just by chance, we ended up testing on the same day that East Orange Water did. You know, we never know in advance what day they're going to do it, and so of course, it came out very close. But, but it, it would be far better if we tested more frequently and, and as a result, catch them at times when they're not testing.
What's the cost per test?
About $600.
$600. The question is whether we should do it every two weeks or something like that.
I, I just want to, I don't know if people have had an opportunity to read the report yet, and Trustee Levinson, village president, and I were at the, the meeting where we talked about a, an alternate supply, but the point that I just want to emphasize, and I think we're going to need to come back to this, is in the litigation, we have consented to an order now that has a schedule in it, which the judge amended to say that the special master could amend that schedule, which I think is sort of unfortunate, but we had a very short timeframe in there to do discovery and for him to make certain, certain determinations or recommendations, and that was August 1st. It turns out August 1st is also the date if we wanted to go to an alternate water supply, which I certainly didn't know, that has to be put to a public referendum. That's one of the reasons these things get so controversial when we see that other municipalities are, are moving to a different water source, and, and, you know, the preferred method of doing that for the, for the water supplier is to own the asset, so, so there's full responsibility rather than to have some partial thing like we have right now. That has to go to a public referendum. To go to a public referendum, you have to be on the, you have to know whether you're going on the ballot or not on August 1st. So what that means is if we're, if we decide that we want to go to the alternate source route, we need to back into that August 1st date, or know that it's next August 1st. You know, to a certain extent, they coincide, and to a certain extent, it's probably a good thing for us because it, it will force us to make some decisions, which to some extent, I think we have enough information about. There's always data gaps, but to a certain extent, it's not very good, because if the special master decides he needs to take more time, or East Orange Water continues to be recalcitrant about discovery and document production and so on and so forth, you know, we'll have to decide, are we going to take the litigation path and see where it gets us? Or not? I mean, it's been a frustrating path so far, but I, I'm just laying that all out, because I really had no idea there was a mandatory public referendum, and there is, and it's August 1st.
And of course, there's a secondary, a, a secondary chore as well that, that we would have to look to in the meantime, because there are financial ramifications from this decision, and, and a careful analysis of the dollars and cents of this has to be, has to be looked at. And if you'll read the report that we sent earlier today, one of the issues which we were concerned about during the meeting, which has to do with the, the cost, the immediate cost for water, the rate, it, it was not as, as much of a problem as we thought, because apparently it's, aside from the override that the village charges, that it's pretty much a push in terms of the, the cost to the, to the residents for water use.
Okay.
But that's near term.
So, we have to make sure, we're very careful in June and July, making sure this all gets dealt with, if we're up to date.
I think, I think in April and May.
April, May, okay.
Yeah.
So this should be an order.
All the work needs to be done in April and May.
So this should be an update on this at least once a month at this meeting?
Yeah. At least once a month. And, and I guess one question is, do we want to assign this to a committee? Because we've really been dealing this, because it's in the litigation context, we've been dealing with it mostly in executive session as a board, as a whole. Now, it's been good that it's the board as a whole, because everybody's involved in it, but once you start having daytime meetings and, you know, so on and so forth...
I know, I know Trustee Levinson's been more involved with this, going back, you know, even before he was on the board, so, you know.
He's a natural.
So I, I don't, I, you know, so we may want to just form a, a different committee and not assign it.
Or be part of Public Works, hours on Public Works.
Okay, then Public Works would, you know...
That makes sense.
Which, it would certainly make sense, then, okay.
That makes sense. All right.
And you're part of Public Works as well.
Yeah, and I can do some daytime meetings now, as long as it's sufficient.
And this way we have someone to blame.
And to kind of sum all this up, can we get more information on the website? I know people go, the last thing that's on the website, I think, is the letter that went out to residents last May, and we've had no one, you know, other than people that are watching this meeting, you know, people ask all the time, well, what's going on with the water?
I actually think it's been updated since then, I just don't think it's, I think it still shows maybe there's been updates.
We've been, we've been reluctant, we've been reluctant to put anything regarding litigation on the website, because there's been a confidential negotiation underway between the parties and the court. And we now have an order, we now have an order which we can put on the website, everyone can see what the order says.
But I, I mean, I think that's nice, but that's a lot of legal, pardon my expression, mumbo jumbo for your average person. I think what would be helpful, I think Mark raised the point, the test results. What we, we, the village is doing testing, we're paying for it, what have been the test results every month? That, people, everyone can understand and can relate to.
We should probably post both, there's analysts.
That's fine. But I think a lot of the legal stuff, I think, is sort of...
Well, that's primarily what we do, so...
No, that's your job, that's great, I'm glad you're doing it, but I think to your average person, it's, it's, you know, it's a lot of mumbo jumbo. I think people just want to know, can they drink the water? That's all they care about.
Well, the answer is yes. I mean, I, I, I heard a couple of those questions, too, and I think it is important to make sure to point out, that even though, and maybe we can look in a little bit to what kind of information we can post on the website, that if there were some sort of health issue at all, we would have notifications out through Reverse 911 on the website, it'd be on the on the front page. You know, we'd put out emails. I mean, we, there would be a lot of information out. So, people shouldn't worry that they haven't heard something or that the lack of information means that there's not something, that something bad could have happened, that if something bad were to happen, we would definitely put that information out as soon as possible. But let's certainly, Steve, maybe we can talk a little bit about how much information we can share and where those, I don't know where those test results have been deposited since they've been taken, if somebody has a, you know, a database of all of those.
Even if there's a paragraph a month that goes up with just, you know, this is the update and it's dated so that people know that we're working on it and they know what the status is, that would be very helpful. And certainly, you know, if you can't disclose information, you're not going to disclose it, but there's got to be things we can disclose every month on the topic so the public knows that, you know, what the status is and that we're working on.
Well, we can update, whatever, whatever you update, I mean, now we're doing East Orange Water public updates in our meetings. Whatever, whatever update we do that, we can just put that on, make sure to put that on the website, even if it's just taking out from the minutes or someone's notes, we can certainly do that.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other items for that, discussion, policy for off-cycle salary increases.
I'd ask this to be put on as a public discussion. We talked a little bit about it in closed session. As everyone knows, on, on the way out, the outgoing administrator left some parting gifts and we want to make sure that, that doesn't happen again, that there isn't fact a policy. Barry, you know, when we had discussed, I know you've been out of pocket for a couple of days. I don't know if you had a chance to look, but I think you were under the impression there is a policy, it just needs to be enforced. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, but if you could.
Yeah, no, I, I have not, but I will be following up on that. And, and we did discuss this in, at the Finance Committee. And I certainly indicated that the way it was handled before is not any way that I had ever seen before, was not a way that I would endorse and is not my practice. And, and quite frankly, I would tend to believe that the existing ordinances and policies would be sufficient to, to ensure and, and basically to summarize my, my belief, my position, my practice and what I certainly policy probably holds is that any salary adjustment, any salary for any employee goes before the trustees in the form of a resolution with a name and a dollar amount, whether it's off-cycle, main-cycle, the full resolution at the beginning of the year or otherwise. And, and that, that's certainly the way I would anticipate going forward.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that.
I think we're all in agreement.
It's an easy one. My first one.
Still the honeymoon.
That's right. The next is Fire Department staffing from the Finance and IT Committee. I don't know if that was someone that Trustee Levinson wanted to speak to or someone else can speak to that tonight.
I know, I know that he wanted to speak about it. We talked about it last year, that the, you know, the table of organization calls for 32 firefighters plus one chief. I think with the two promotions, I think we're 30 plus one. We're using overtime to, to fill in the other two positions when we have to. It's not always, we don't, because the minimum staff and we don't always have to, depends on vacation and sick. Minimum cost for the six plus the one. But the concern was, and I'll let Howie maybe want to talk, you know, put on the next meeting again, I'll let Howie go into further detail, but what we did want to get, and John had done a, an analysis, I, I want to say 18 months ago maybe even, but it was quite a while ago, of what the difference between overtime was and bringing on the two firefighters and what the crossover point was in the number of years that the firefighters had to be on, assuming normal average overtime for the past three years. Obviously, you get a high number of fires, things could change, but based on the averages of what the crossover was and that there was break even for doing new, even with full core, fully loaded, and also the concern about firefighters and the retirement schedules over the next three years, considering how long it takes to bring a new firefighter on, at the time of their academy, the list probationary period until they're on. And, and that was the real concern, that we don't put ourselves in a bind where we're forced to hire firefighters at the last minute, get up to speed.
I think it's probably worth having that discussion as far as the police department is, and really every department is concerned, and making sure, I don't know the best way for us to go about this as a governing body and as an organization, but making sure that we have a much more solid and comprehensive HR plan so that we have a better idea of when people are leaving, you know, three, four, five years before it's happening. I, I agree 100%. I think, you know, a lot of it has been quick and then, and, you know, we're kind of rushed into, not that, not that, you know, we're making a decision necessarily one way or the other, but it's all compressed as far as time is concerned. And making sure that we have a better sense of the outlook of that, I think is important. And not, not only for our budget, but just to make sure that we have continuity of, especially for fire and police services. And, you know, that's just extremely important.
Well, I think, I mean, the problem is that every year there's, I know that in, particularly the Fire Department, I'm sorry, the Police Department, the chief has always shared a list of, here's the number of people that are eligible to retire, including the chief himself, I mean, based on years of service. But that does, that's not necessarily correlating to people who are actually going to retire. And in my conversations with, with both chiefs, a lot of times they don't know this in advance. I mean, sometimes people are very vocal about it and some people, you know, you, they come in Monday morning, say, yep, I'm retiring next month or whenever, they give very, very short notice. And so, you're right, we want to have this list of when people are going to be eligible, but that doesn't necessarily correlate to when they will retire.
I think it'd be fair for us to see the analysis of what it costs to have the firefighters versus the overtime cost, and I mean fully loaded, so we can see what it is and what the crossover point is, if there is one. Because the firefighters started at a low pay the first year and, you know, increases through steps and normal increases, and it may be less expensive to have those two firefighters. And if we anticipate retirements three years from now, then it may be more cost effective to do the two now, so.
Yeah, I think this also has to be discussed in the context of the budget, right? We haven't looked at the budget yet for this year.
That's what we need the analysis for, because if it's, if it's less expensive to hire two firefighters than pay all that overtime, then that's a budget thing either way. But if it's more expensive and the overtime is less expensive, I mean, forgetting the other issues of, you know, safety and, you know, that issue is also important too, whether the firefighters are getting overworked and too many hours and so forth and so on. And these are all things that have to be addressed. And we haven't done it, we've been, you know, I think we are owed an analysis of this. And it doesn't have to be done tomorrow, but, you know, it should be done in the next month or two.
I think it's also possible to develop a policy around that. My recollection of John's analysis was that, is that, that's the reason the firefighters weren't hired or maybe I should say fully staffed up in terms of the table of organization and that we continued to pay overtime because it, it was better for us overall. I don't remember anything about when the break even point would occur because presumably there is one. It seems to me that you, you might be able to develop a policy, I just throw this out as an idea, where if you're close enough to the full complement, you could fill that in with, with overtime if that made economic sense. But, you know, if you're five short or something, no, that's going to have impacts both in terms of life safety and in terms of, you know, the firefighters and, and their abilities and resources and so on and so forth. But if you're one or two short, because I know we went through the same analysis at DPW, DPW, they, we, for whatever reason, don't feel the same necessity to, you know, continue to staff that up, and that's one of the reasons we're filling in with seasonal and overtime.
Right. We actually have the exact same situation in DPW now because we're a couple of people short again. One person was promoted.
Exactly.
Leaving a vacancy. We, and, you know, I assume we're filling that with overtime now, I'm not sure, but we should have that same thing done for that department too.
And at Mario's Dinner, many people expressed a near-term desire to retire, you know.
Yeah, okay.
After some drinking. In vino veritas.
Is that the new HR plan?
Pretty much, pretty much. It worked.
I think Deborah's not going to be here in time for this discussion.
Well, I was going to say, one, one last chance of moving after the consent agenda resolutions because I don't think it impacts that. And if she's not here, then we have to talk about it and move on. Is everybody okay with that?
Probably just, I mean.
And we can discuss it and speed it up.
I mean, if we have consensus amongst ourselves, it's irrelevant, right?
Well, it's not irrelevant because she, she, you know, this was an issue that was important to her and she asked that if, if it's possible to hold off, then let's do so. And again, if there's nothing on the consent.
The, the good thing about holding off, we get to keep Jerry Ryan in the audience a little longer.
It sounds like a joke. Can you keep a Maplewood Township Committee person in suspense?
Okay, well, we, let's move on to our consent agenda and immediately following that, we'll have our discussion about the board of elections.
Okay, thank you. We have a resolution establishing the dates, rules and regulations for the 2012 annual spring cleanup of leaf, lawn and garden rakings. A resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's Recreational Trails Program in the amount of $25,000 and authorizing the required funding match in the amount not to exceed $9,000 for the reconstruction of a bicycle path from Mead Street to the South Orange Middle School at 70 North Ridgewood Road. A resolution authorizing an inter-local shared services agreement for participation in the Essex Countywide Criminal Justice Information Network between the township of South Orange Village and the County of Essex in the amount not to exceed $15,000. A resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the Breakers Group Incorporated in the amount of $37,773.90 pursuant to State Contract Number M-7,000 for the installation of fiber optic cable to the South Orange Firehouse. A resolution hiring substitute teachers for the 2012 Winter Recreation Cultural Arts Program in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. A resolution hiring a pool manager for the 2012 Summer Pool Season in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. A resolution hiring a seasonal staff for the 2012 Winter Recreation Programs in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. A resolution hiring a per diem crossing guard in the South Orange Department of Public Safety Police Force. A resolution awarding a competitive contract to the ICMA Center for Public Safety Management in the amount not to exceed $50,000 to conduct a comprehensive assessment and analysis of policing services in the township of South, South Orange Village. A resolution awarding a competitive contract to Botaglia Associates LLC for accounting services in the amount not to exceed $190,000, $190,384.98 for year one, beginning June 1st, 2011. We also have a resolution authorizing the executive session at tonight's meeting of the Board of Trustees.
And our executive session agenda items are as follows. Under Contract and Negotiation Matters, SOPAC Funding, Sterling Pilot Administrative Consultant Contract, Contractual Negotiations and Third Street Property Acquisition. Under Anticipated or Pending Litigation Matter, Firehouse Construction Dispute and Accountability, A Personnel Matter, Police Department Staffing, Attorney Client Privileges Affordable Hasn't Set Aside.
Mark, you said you have some questions?
Oh, and the resolution regarding the ICMA Center 20-043, I didn't get to read the whole report and I know most of it came to me today of, of the, of the thing, but I wasn't really quite sure. And I'm, and I'm really nervous about is having to repeat the SOPAC report. And I'm not really sure about, that it's clear what the deliverable to the town is supposed to be in terms of what that report is going to, is going to outline and, and what exactly is we're looking for. Now, may, it might have been in there and I admit I may have missed it, but I can only glance at it, but I didn't see that in there and, and I wasn't sure. That's really my biggest concern is that we don't have repeated that and that we're totally satisfied that they understand what it is that we want, assuming that we understand what it is that we want.
Yeah, Mark, that's a, that's a great question and I actually had the various, very similar thoughts as well. I absolutely don't want to repeat of that. So, a couple of things just for clarity and for everyone's benefit. What this is, is a, a bid that we put out or an RFP that we put out quite some time ago, this was last spring, for a company to do a.
I think it actually went out July, I'm not sure.
Okay, we got the responses over the summer, so maybe, we got the responses back in July.
Oh, you might have been, yeah, you might have been in July.
Anyway, it was a, an RFP for vendors to provide a, a best practices study for the police department, to study the police department from, from top to bottom with respect to staffing, equipment, facilities, you know, processes, procedures, policies, really help understand what best practices and how they could possibly improve efficiencies. You know, there's been talk for years and years about what is the appropriate staffing level, and a lot of times it's been based on what a higher, high watermark was at some point in the past. And this is obviously to level set that based on today's realities. It could be higher, it could be lower, we don't know. So, we went out to RFP, we got quite a number of responses. There was a subcommittee that was formed to review those responses, to actually first to review and score them. And the committee was made up of, from, from the VOT was Alex and myself, from the Citizens' Public Safety Committee, there was two members, from the administration, the former administrator and purchasing agent participated, and there were representatives from the police department, the chief and several officers from the police department. Anyway, we all scored them. The top highest scores were invited in for interviews and then based on that, we all participated in the interviews, we ranked them and we made a recommendation. And the, the vendor that we thought provided the best of what we were looking for was this vendor called ICMA. Anyway, that's the history of what this is. To answer your question about your concern about this, make sure we get what it is we want, a couple of things. Number one, obviously their response to the RFP was, was pretty thorough, although I'll be honest, I was a little unclear as to what they'd be providing based on that. However, what they did provide were sample deliverables of what they've done for other municipalities. And actually, I had sent out an email earlier offering that, so I have those, I'd be happy to share them with you. Samples of what they've done for other towns, which I thought were incredibly thorough, professional, concise and actionable. That's really the key point, they were actionable, very different from the report we've seen from some of our other recent consultants. So, that's what gave me a much greater confidence, not to mention, of course, the fact that we sat down and met with these people in person and they really seemed very, very credible.
The payment schedule, which was also a, a, part of the problem we got ourselves into before, so is this payment schedule more balanced that they don't get that 90% of it before that? Or is it, or is that what they're requesting?
No. And the other point, I had communication with council today, the, the way this contract was written originally was that there was a payment within, there was one payment within, essentially when it's within two days of signing. There was another payment upon delivery of some draft data analysis and then delivery on the final report. And I asked council to change that to be acceptance on that, that data analysis and acceptance of that draft report. So, in other words, you know, I don't want them to just throw something over the wall and say, okay, now you got to pay us, right? We have to review it, we have to accept it before.
And what's, and what's the timeframe on this?
The entire project is scheduled, is it four months? Steve, I'm sorry, I don't remember. Is it, I believe it's four.
I thought it was six months, but it might have been.
It's four months or six months, I don't remember, but there is a, a timeline in there.
We think six, but hang on a minute, we'll.
Well, we're looking for that. Can we, can we make part of the contract or an addendum to the contract, the actual deliverables we're looking for? Because just because some of their other work products were good, I mean, if it's not, if the deliverables aren't written into our contract.
The one, I mean, at an interesting point, I'll defer to council on how to respond, how to specifically deal with that in the contract. All I could say is that they gave us four different samples and they were all very, very different. So, it's not like there's a, a, a template, you know, necessarily that we could say this, you know what I mean? They were very.
Well, there's not a template, but we must know what we're looking for. So, if we don't tell them what we're looking for, then they may give us something that's not set.
Okay, what we're looking for may be different than what the police chief is looking for versus what some, and, you know, and we may not have been both on the same page of what we're looking for, but I, I think we should be very clear, to Janine's point, that we should be very clear that they understand what we're looking for as much as what the RFP said, I guess, you know.
The RFP outlined it pretty well, but. Was, was, yeah. And that was the problem I had in reviewing the contract because initially it said that the scope of services was attached to Exhibit B, there was no Exhibit B. And when I pressed John for what that was, he said it was the proposal. And the proposal, of course, had a lot of puffing in it and had not, from my perspective, a very clear statement of, of what the scope of services was. So, I, I put provision in the contract that notwithstanding anything to the contrary in the proposal, what they're going to deliver is what was specified in the two critical paragraphs in the RFP.
Is there a penalty for missing the deadline or, or court for stage or something like that? I really don't want this dragging on. You know, I don't want to have this and say, we're expecting this to be done in 150 days from now.
120.
120 days. Well, 120 days from the time the contract's signed. So, let's just say it's signed, you know, before March 1st and then 120 days go by and that thing's not there and we're sitting there twiddling our thumbs waiting for it.
That's hard, that's hard, Mark, because that might be more our problem than their problem if something's not delivered on time.
I understand that, but if, but if they've finished taking all the data analysis and it's taken 120 days after that to get the report, then we know what's there for them. I understand it's hard, but I just don't want to be in a position, because this, this is something that impacts our budget and we can't sit in on it.
A couple of things. First of all, the fact that it's a fixed price project, clearly they have motivation to, to deliver sooner or later. But if it's time materials, right, I think we'd be at much greater risk. I went down that. The other thing is, I dug up a document here and I, actually, Steve, I should send this to you and I'll circulate it. I think this should probably be an appendix to the contract. What it is, it's an extraction, it's a summary taken from the proposal that summarizes the scope of work. When we use this as part of the committee, when we as a committee were evaluating, first we decided, this is, yep, these are the guys we want to go with, then we had a subsequent meeting to say, "What do we want them to do?" And this was the document that we as the committee worked from, and we were in agreement that this is what it is. There's nothing new here that isn't in the proposal, but the proposal has a lot of fluff, and this sort of boils it down.
Usually you like to see so that you know that there's a meeting of the minds, that that list comes from the party that's doing the contracting. I mean, it's nice that we're telling the contractor what we expect, but when the contractor submits the contract, you would like to see the scope of services from him so that he understands what indeed he's going to deliver to you, not that you're telling him, you know, when you shove the contract back at him signed, that this is what we expect from you.
That's fine, we can show him the list, and he can come back with his comments on it, we can either modify it or adjust it.
Yeah, sure.
You know, so...
Who's he reporting to? Is he reporting to a committee, or to the chief, or to the administrator? Do you know how that's handled?
I would rather appoint to the Public Safety Committee and the administrator.
That's right.
That'd be my first choice.
And the other, I agree with that, Mark. The other piece is that ultimately they would do a public presentation as well of their findings, not only to us, but also to the police department directly. Because, let's be clear, this has caused some angst among the police department when they've heard...
I'm sure it has.
When they've heard about this, you know, people, right off the bat, think it's one thing, and I think we've said amongst ourselves, you know, that's a reality. But we honestly, this is not staged, this is not stacked, we didn't tell them, "Go ahead and find 10 people," you know. This is, they could come back and say, "We need more people," they could come back and say, "We need less people," they could say, "The staffing is correct, but we need to adjust schedules." We don't, we didn't tell them what we want, what the end result should be.
I understand very well that they probably think they can do this internally and come back with a report that's just as good and save the town some money, but I do agree that we probably need to do this with outside set of eyes and so forth, and hopefully they'll cooperate with it and see the better good for the long run, because I think, you know, the more efficient we can make that police department, even with the same exact number of men, the better it is for everybody.
Yeah, again, the police department's been very involved, the chief in particular, as well as the president of the PBA, and other officers have been involved from day one, so this is not, nobody's, you know, blindsiding them, they're well aware of this, they're on board, they're engaged in the process.
And there would just be two other things that I would note to that. One is that when we were looking at all the different firms that responded about this, that I think there was a general consensus, Trustee Goulbord, correct me if I'm misstating this, that ICMA was a very interesting mix of academic experience and people with a professional and practical background in law enforcement, people who had been police chiefs, who had been, in fact, one of them, I think, actually had been a municipal administrator, unless I'm mixing people up.
He was a chief and an municipal administrator.
Right, that's right, so, you know, it was an interesting diversity of background that went into that, and one of the other points that they made was that as they go about doing these projects, they've done, I don't know how many in different towns, similar to this, where they do a best practices study, is that sometimes they, or not sometimes, but often, they learn things from the municipality they're studying which become a best practice. And I think that our police department has a number of those already, and that this should be in no way seen as, "Well, it's this and it needs to be better." You know, I think any organization could always do better, and what they talked about in the meeting, when we were discussing with the different firms, was that we very well may learn something from this to the police department that we end up recommending as the best practices to other police departments when we do these studies at a later date. So, I thought that was an interesting insight into the way that they do these different studies and go from town to town with their different experiences.
Michael, one other question also, did anybody call the other towns that they did deliverables on to see that they were satisfied with the report, so is that...
That's a good question, I, you know, I take that back, yes, sorry, I should be more definitive, I just kind of racked my brain from memory. Yes, John said he had done his due diligence.
John who?
John Gross, had done some reference checking for them.
Could I pull out 2012-44? And on this one, I just wanted to know if we had competitively bid this, do we need to competitively bid this, and has anyone looked at the cost of this versus the cost of having our own finance department? Looks like a high number to me, but I know nothing about it. And I don't know if anyone can answer it who's here tonight.
I think, we did bid it out, but nobody else responded, and it's kind of a hard thing to get responses from, because, you know, it's a sort of a specialized field. As far as going, you know, back to what we had before, I don't think we could do it overnight, I think we'd have to make that decision...
Over the year, right?
Over a year period of time, and the, I still, and I'm pretty sure, we had the conversation with John and with Regan, definitely not Barry, that the cost was still a slight savings going, and I don't want to say slight being a dollar anymore, 15,000 or something, I know Howie knows the exact number, but that there were still some savings to the town for this next contract. We, I wholeheartedly agree that a year and a half from now, you know, this, how long is this contract for, three years?
It says one year.
It goes till 2014.
But this says here on...
But that's the amount for year one.
Yeah, I think it's a three-year contract.
Oh, three-year contract?
It's a three-year contract with the built-in 2% increases, and I, right about that?
2%.
But 2% increases, and I think that I would say that after, towards the end of year two, we should absolutely, as a board, we're looking to going back to, and I also would not doubt of that at that time, if any other firms doing this across the state, there's more and more towns look to outsource these kind of things or share services on these kind of things, but it's something we do have to pay attention to, and, you know, the bigger hit on the savings we got a few years ago, some of that is gone now, so...
Yeah, I mean, I remember when we did it, it was a slam dunk, I mean, it was night and day, and I just don't remember what that number is, and that was an email I sent this afternoon.
163,000 or something, but it's definitely gone up, but it was, you know, but I think the average increase over those past three years comes out to like a 3% increase if we did this. I know Howie did a much more detailed analysis and had done it, and we still agreed that it was the better, the finance committee agreed that this was the better way to go, at least for now, but I definitely agree 100% that we have to be in a position that we don't leave ourselves open in two years when we come to that point, that we say, "We're going to do a complete analysis and decide whether we want to continue outsourcing," or at least be in a position where we can have better negotiating against, since there's only one person doing it.
It's hard to negotiate that, right?
Yeah, it's very hard, but they were actually very, very fair about it, agreed to the 2% increases due to the new cap in the state, because I think they would like a larger increase, in fact, they asked for a much larger increase, and we said we couldn't do it with 2%. So, it's, but that's the short answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this one just goes to our conversation before about improving process, like we just saw this resolution, this contract today.
Both these two items, 43 and 44, same thing. We both, we didn't have a public discussion and did not see the documents, you know, I saw, I think it got to be sent to me over the weekend, to be honest, but...
Yeah, that's one we didn't see till today.
So, although this originally was sent out actually like six months ago, and it's been tweaked into it though, definitely been tweaked into it, so, no question about it. In fact, we should, I think the renewal on this contract is several months ago, this is actually a retroactive.
Yeah, this is pretty late.
It's expired.
Yeah, this is a retroactive contract, so we're past that deadline, and I won't get into the lies of that.
Are there any other questions or comments on any of these consent items? Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right, how else can we delay Jerry from going home further?
All right, so let's have our discussion about the Board of Education elections. In fact, I believe this is the last item on our agenda. I do want to put this discussion in context quickly so people don't, aren't misled into how much is left on the agenda. We do have a resolution to move the election also on our agenda, we have a discussion item, and we have a resolution on separate action, and I want to get council's advice as far as this bill that we're talking about has actually not been passed by the legislature yet. I know, I've seen emails come back and forth, you know, informing us about what has been happening or not, so that regardless of what we do, we would be required to pass this after the legislature does. I know Jerry's nodding his head, that's the same conversation I'm sure you've had at Maplewood, so that vote is actually tomorrow in the assembly. And anyway, so, I want, I just don't want someone to see the discussion item, see the resolution, and feel as though that they might be able to have more discussion later. I think if people want to discuss this, we should do it, but do it under this discussion item, and I kind of asked council a question and then kept rambling on, so I don't know if you want to speak to it.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything to act upon until the legislature acts, so you could, obviously can discuss the, you know, the desire to do it, to move the election to November, but I don't think that there's anything to act upon at this point. There is that interesting consequence also of the legislation that Mr. Ryan described, which is that it effectively neuters the...
Board of School Estimate.
Further neuters, it's pretty neutered.
And in connection, in connection with some questions that Trustee Bauer has been asking me, I've been trying to drill down and get the original documentation, legislation, whatever, that created this anomaly that we have here in Maplewood and South Orange with the Board of Education. A few years back, there was an appellate division case which Maplewood brought to get clarification as to what a majority of the Board of School Estimate really was, and there's an interesting footnote in the opinion where the court observes that South Orange and Maplewood have this very unique circumstance where we have an elected, an elected board, but we have a Board of School Estimate, and there's no indication as to how we got to this, into this condition. And I've been pressing council for the Board of Education to help me understand how we got here, what led to this, and I just today got an email from her which essentially says that it's buried somewhere in history, and she really doesn't know how it happened. I'm not satisfied with that, because I think we have to know a little more about how this was created in order for us to better understand even what the legislation means that's being proposed right now, because it's, I think we have to read those things in context. And so, we're doing further research on that now, and along with the questions that were asked of us by Trustee Gould, we're going to be shedding some light hopefully on that situation as well.
Thank you.
Also, we had talked about, talking about the changes to the CBD, our discussion, are we still going to have that discussion tonight, or are we moving that to another night?
I think we should have the discussion tonight.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
The CBD, we had talked, that was the beginning of the meeting, the ordinance, we were going to put that as a discussion item, but you didn't mention that before closing.
Oh, yes, okay, sure. Oh, about the, I don't know, I, I'm waiting for the planning board in the...
Yeah, I didn't, I thought that wasn't a discussion item for this meeting, but it was one for next meeting.
We can just, whatever you want.
Whatever.
Okay, well, let's get through this one first.
Okay.
Regarding the school board election, in theory, I don't really have an objection to moving it to November, I would not do it this year, I would say next year at the earliest, and for a lot of, there are a lot of concerns. One is the Board of School Estimate, despite what Mr. Ryan says about it being archaic, I think it also, I think the problem with it is it's not strong enough, the Board of School Estimate, I think we need to make it stronger now, weaker, and have more say in the budget. I think right now, it seems like the BOE can make a lot of decisions about the budget, and the Board of School Estimate is approving that budget as a whole, and that, and that so forth, and I think that as elected officials, whether it's the Board of Ed or the Board of Trustees, it's up to them to make that decision and not pass everything off on a referendum. So, I would prefer to see a way to strengthen the Board of School Estimate, and I'm not really sure how to do that, and I don't want to necessarily delve into that. I also had some other issues about the, about the elections themselves being moved to November in terms of, I asked the village clerk to get us a sample ballot from the county clerk, who has not been able to do that yet. There's a concern, because the Board of Ed election is every single year, you could have an election year with the presidential election year, like this year, Congress is up for election, whoever else is up, could be a US senator sometimes in the same year, you could have multiple elections, our voting machines don't have a lot of room on them for ballots. One year, I think it was like 10, 12 years ago, we had nine, nine to 10 candidates for the BOE, at least for a very crowded ballot, at least for some of the people, as I understand it from the county clerk from a conversation I had with him quite some time ago, is that those names would be, the Board of Ed election could be on the lower right. So, you could have a higher turnout with even less people voting for the BOE than you currently have, and, you know, one of the things I suggested to the, years ago to the county was buying the new video machines which have one contest per screen, so you have a, you have a screen up there that says presidential election, Obama versus whoever, and then hit the vote, and it goes to the next screen, so you go through every single screen instead of having this weird overlay ballot that we have now. But I do want to see the sample ballot from the county clerk to see how it would look, how he thinks it would look depending on a typical election year, whether it's a presidential election and an off-election year. But if we were going to move it, I would hold off until next year, no matter what.
And one quick point to make to that, just as far as timing goes, I know there had been a deadline that was kind of tossed around February 17th, being a deadline that we need to make a decision, some conversations that I had, that's not actually the deadline, and that we would have an opportunity to discuss this and pass a resolution if the board wanted to in the next meeting, so that that would still be within the deadline. So, I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page as far as timelines. I was under the impression that this was the last meeting that we would have the chance to, that's not correct, that that is a deadline that the county clerk can move and has done to allow South Orange Maplewood to have this discussion, because we're in this unique situation. So, we will be able to, again, if the board wants to, discuss this in the next meeting, so there isn't quite the time crunch. I mean, there still is, but not quite as bad as it originally seemed.
I'd like to, I agree with Mark that I don't have a problem with it moving to November, but I don't think we should do it this year, I think there are way too many issues out there that we have to resolve, and we can't resolve those within the next two weeks. I'd like to explore with Maplewood the, what Mr. Ryan suggested, which is possibly getting rid of the BSE and going to a referendum for anything over 2% camp, I like that idea on first blush, but I'd like to have the time to study that in further detail. So, I'm in favor of November, but not for this year.
Yeah, I agree with Mark and Nancy. It's an interesting concept when you really think about this, there's lots of issues. I mean, certainly on the, you know, on the pro side, there's no question turnout is higher. I had asked the clerk for statistics on voter turnout on April elections for the past three years and November elections for the past three years, and it is just night and day, I mean, it's overwhelming. You get much greater participation in November, so that largely, you know, certainly weighs towards favor of moving it to get greater participation. You know, obviously there's cost savings, I think I heard that, the statistic I heard was about $35,000 at costs, and by transferring it to November, the cost is then picked up by the county, not by the school board, so there's a cost.
That's not definite by this legislation. Part of the cost could be kicked back to the Board of Ed.
Okay, well, there should be some cost savings, you would hope. You know, on the flip side, there's absolutely some downside, I mean, now it raises the bar for candidates, because now they have to, it's going to be more costly for people that are running to try to mail to every household instead of just targeting households that have voted in Board of Ed elections, trying to get attention, particularly like this year as an example, where it's a presidential election year, trying to get attention through all the other ads and other campaigning that's going on. And the other point about the neutering of the Board of School Estimate, you know, as everyone has mentioned, the Board of, you know, or neutering them more, as somebody said, I mean, the problem is the Board of School Estimate now historically has really just been a rubber stamp. I mean, the years that I've been a part of it, while I've been happy to vote no when I felt the budget was wrong, usually I was standing alone, since I've been involved, the budgets have never been turned down, so it becomes essentially a rubber stamp for the Board of Ed. However, on the one, on the flip of that, there is a check and balance, simply by having that Board of School Estimate, I think naturally drives the Board of Education to be a little bit more conservative than they might have been otherwise. Last year specifically, it was a, I don't know, 1.94, something like that, and they told us multiple times, "Well, just be lucky, it wasn't three, it could have been three, and we still would have been in cap." So, they kind of kept threatening us that it could have been higher, but it wasn't, and I think without that check and balance of the Board of School Estimate, it would have been three, and that would still be within cap, so that would not trigger the public referendum. So, there is some fear there that that they go run a little more amok, run amok than they have in the past. Of course, the flip side to that is that some people say by having a November election, you'll have a more engaged electorate, and those people will be more tax-focused, and hopefully will elect people that will represent their needs. So, it's, well, on the surface it seems simple, greater turnout, slam dunk, done deal, but there's a lot of nuances to it that are worth considering. All that being said, I think in the end, you know, after weighing the pros and cons, I think it makes sense to move it to November, but starting next year. I think there's already, for all intents and purposes, an election underway, there are... There are candidates that have declared, that are doing their process, and to pull the rug out from under them, kind of midstream, I think, is a little unfair. The deadline for, the filing deadline, I think, is the 27th, which is just two weeks from now. So I think the trains left the station for this year. So while I think it's a good idea, I think we should, we should look towards considering this for next year. And lastly, I'm sorry, the, for us to do this for this year, we'd essentially be, you know, slapping the face of the Board of Ed who didn't want to do something this year. Ultimately, this really should be their decision, so we should throw it back to them and let them have the opportunity to do the right thing, which I think is to move it to the November election to get greater turnout. And for us to overrule them while we can, it's a little slippery slope and we don't want to tread in those waters, so I think we should, I think we should wait.
All good points.
Just want to say one other thing. You know, right now, the Board of Ed election is 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM, I think, on whatever day it is in April, which to me has always been one of the amazing shames, that we didn't have a Board of Ed election that was a full day. And I also know that many states have gone to longer election periods altogether. In some states, you can vote up to seven days before Election Day. And I also think, I would urge the county clerk and the state to consider a longer election period for these things. We, if we want a higher turnout, we should spend the money to do it right. So it's not only new voting machines, it's also extending to go to seven-day voting periods as they do in other states, and every possible way to do it. And, you know, the real important thing is not only just to change it to November to save money, which some people suggested is a good reason to do it by itself, it really isn't, unless you take advantage of that savings and use it towards improving the system in November, which right now is not working perfectly, because turnouts in November are going down every year or two.
I very much agree with that. New Jersey is way behind, way behind many states in the nation.
I think they're intentionally way behind. I think it's intentional to keep the Congress in office.
I think it is too. Oh, I think it is too, absolutely.
So I think, I think these are things that I think we should, I actually think we should pass a resolution urgently, state to consider seven-day voting periods and buying state-of-the-art election.
And why even seven days? Some states have much longer periods.
I don't know what the-
But we do, we do now have a vote-by-mail system that's a little easier to do than the mailing ballots.
That's not the same, because don't really get counted unless the election's close enough. I mean, a real, a real voting system, not one that gives a little service to it.
Also, same-day registration or seven days before.
You know, this is the 21st century and we have like-
The biggest problem when I'm at the polling place, every election, the biggest problem is people who didn't know that it was 30 days before that or so. I mean, it's ridiculous.
It's not a good system.
It's ridiculous.
Well, I think there's a turnout issue in spring, partially because people are required to vote, well, not required, but if they choose to get involved, three elections within a two-month, a two-month time period, between the Board of Ed elections and the municipal elections and the primaries.
Right.
And that is strange. So I'm not sure, you know, I actually just personally started the day out a little more in favor of moving them to November. I've thought about it more and I have hesitancies, some of which stem from the fact that I absolutely strongly disagree with the idea of moving the municipal elections to November, and started to kind of think about those two together instead of the separate issues. And, but there's got, there's got to be some way to improve the efficiency of this in the spring. One of the ideas that I had mentioned, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of traction to this, and it's not right now legally allowable, but is to have the Board of Ed elections and the spring elections on the same day. So instead of having three different elections in the spring, you have two. That's maybe not the best solution, but perhaps that would get higher turnout for both of those elections if the Board of Ed and municipal elections are on the same day. But then for Maplewood, that's difficult, because your elections are in November. So that wouldn't, that turnout wouldn't necessarily benefit Maplewood, or you wouldn't see Maplewood residents come out to the polls more.
Actually, Maplewood, Maplewood's most important election is in June, when it's the primary, so, right? Food for thought, but meantime, I think most of us agree to leaving it for next year to go to November, so I don't think we have to go through a lot of other-
So we have a resolution here that I assume we just won't take action on, it'll just die?
Yeah.